Okay, well, welcome everyone. We apologize for the little bit of a delay, but we're still getting our technology perfected here. So our staff is doing a great job. It's a challenge to do in person and remote at the same time. And I don't know that too many other cities are doing that. So we're doing good. So we'll get started if we can call the roll.
Alderman Lentz.
Here.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Here.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Here.
Alderwoman Buse. Alderwoman Patel.
Here.
Alderman Fader.
Here.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
City Manager Gibson. City Attorney O'Keefe.
Great. Now we need to go ahead and approve the minutes from June 14th. If I could get a motion.
I will move to approve the minutes from June 14th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's done. Now's the time on our agenda for public requests and petitions. So if there's anyone in the audience either listening or here that has a topic for us that's not on our agenda tonight, now's your chance. Is anybody in the Zoom audience? I have a couple, but no hands up. Okay, good. All right, so we'll move on from there into the city manager's report. And the first item is a liquor license for the old Barla Freire.
Barla Freire LLC is requesting a liquor license to sell all kinds of intoxicating liquor at retail by the drink, including Sundays at 7637 Wydawn Boulevard. The police department has completed its review of the application and supports the issuance of the requested license. The planning and development department has also approved the application with no objections. The applicant has chosen not to submit a petition from surrounding property owners and first floor tenants. As a result, they are aware that this application must have a super majority vote of five board members in order to be approved. Staff has requested that a representative attend the meeting. Staff recommends passing a motion to approve the liquor license to sell all kinds of intoxicating liquor at retail by the drink, including Sundays.
Hey, very good. Would you like to address us at all? I don't know if you all have any questions. We're all just, everybody in town is excited about this. So, yeah. So when might you open?
We are planning for a soft opening private party.
You turn on the microphone at the podium?
Can you hear me Becky?
Yes, thank you.
We are planning for a soft open party on the 9th of July if all of our other permits come into place in time. So that's the tentative and a public opening on the 13th.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Any questions guys?
I just want to, I want to make a statement. I went to a wedding this past weekend. It was up at a farm and I believe that you all catered it.
Oh, you were at Winslow's Farm?
I was at Winslow's.
That was us, yeah. Oh wow, that's wonderful.
I want everyone to know.
Beautiful affair.
It was a beautiful affair and it was top shelf. The food was absolutely unbelievable. I've never had such good food at any weddings I've ever been to and usually don't really care for the food. This was fantastic.
I hear you.
Yes, no, this was.
I appreciate it.
From the appetizers to the main courses, you know, I mean, it was really the best food I've ever had. So I am really looking forward to you coming in. So thank you.
Thank you, we're excited. We're excited.
We're having dinner at your other restaurant tomorrow night.
Oh fabulous, okay.
Yeah.
I'll have to see you there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, all right, I think we're good. So.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And we'll vote, yeah. All right, Alderman Lentz.
I'll move to approve liquor license for Barla Freire located at 7637, 7639 Wydawn Boulevard.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're off to the races. Okay, see ya. Okay, um, next we have some unfinished business from last time. The PUD for Forsyth and Central. And I know that you're here to address us some, but we have a city manager report first. And I am not, this is not a public hearing, correct? Okay, but we would take comments if there are any questions. Okay, go ahead.
The RFBA for this item covers the rezoning, a planned unit development and subdivision plat for the subject properties listed on the agenda. The required public hearing was opened and closed during the June 14th Board of Aldermen meeting. This evening, the applicant is presenting additional renderings following questions from the previous meeting. Staff recommends the Board of Aldermen approve the rezoning and planned unit development per the required development commitment set forth in the ordinance Exhibit C Forsyth Central PUD document.
Very good. You want to come and show us what you brought?
Thanks for having us back, we appreciate it. So on behalf of Green Street and Myths, I want to show a few things. We're not going to go through the whole presentation again because I just want to kind of show you the new stuff, if that was okay. I think Alderman Fader, you'd asked about the seventh floor and kind of what that was going to look like. So we've kind of laid this, well, we finished it. So we wanted to show you, rather than just the black and white photos that we had last time. But it is about a 7,000 square foot outdoor space, lot of soft seating. There'll be a lot of landscaping that doesn't show up on this plan. But you can see it's really just an outdoor space that will face both south and west. That green to the top of the picture, that's the roof of our ballrooms. We'll actually have a green roof on top of the ballroom. So that's why that's there. And then if you look over to the left, you can kind of see the outdoor bar right in the middle of the building there. But that's, that is what our outdoor space is going to look like on the seventh floor. Questions on that? Yeah, it's big space, so.
Looks great.
David, so if you're up there, you just, as we've talked about, it's sort of available for people in the community to come up there. So is the bar shown on here?
Yeah, so the bar is actually underneath this space here. So this is, this is part of the bar here. And then the rest of the bar is behind it, okay, underneath. So there will, you will be able to easily have access to the bar. And the bar will have food too, but it'll be mostly small plates. It's not really a sit-down dining place, but it'll have small plates and a bar. But it's all in this space here. It's about 3,000 square feet of bar that's behind, underneath the building here.
Thank you.
So you probably covered this David already, so excuse me if you did. But what, on the street level, how will people know about this space and how would they get there?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think Alderwoman Patel mentioned this last time. There are sites out there that people can go to to find these kind of spaces. So obviously it'll be on our website for this building, so they'll be published that way. I don't know if it will have signage out front or not. We honestly haven't got that far, so that may or may not happen. So. Anything else on this one? All right, and then I've got a 45-minute video I want to show you. Okay, so. So there was some questions last time about the skyline and really what we, what will look like in Clayton. And so our Crackerjack Architectural Team went to Google Earth and they placed our building in the skyline. So you can see our building right here in the middle, okay? That's what our building is. And this thing is going to kind of rotate around Clayton. And you can kind of see what our building will look like from a couple different angles all around the city. You can see us right there in the middle. I know there was some concern that, you know, we didn't want to just be a rectangular box, right? And I think if you really look at this thing, you can see there is a lot of depth to this building. And yes, if you look at it from certain sides, it's going to look like a rectangle. But there's a lot going on on this building that's going to make it, I think, very unique and something pretty cool for the city.
Well, it does show, except from that one side, it does show sort of a step-down effect, you know, sort of a stair step.
And I've got some other slides I'm going to show you, Mayor, that shows kind of the top of it a little more in detail as we get around this thing. But I think as you can see, when you go around it, it is, it's going to stand out. And it's going to have, again, it's not just a shoebox on its end. You can see it right here through from this angle.
Will it appear as blue as it does in this video?
I think it will appear very blue, but obviously it reflects, some of that is reflection off the sky, you know, so. And it'll kind of zoom in here a little bit, so you can kind of see it a little bit more up close. I will tell you that as we zoom in here, the way Google Earth works, you'll see some first and second floor that's not accurate. And that's because we, we could put our building on here, but Google Earth wouldn't let us remove the one and two-story buildings that were there. Okay? All right, so I promise we will remove them. They will be demoed, so you can kind of see the lower floors here is not an accurate portrayal of what we will look like. So please look from the third floor up and it will be very charming.
And this is 25 stories?
25 stories, yes ma'am.
And just help me out, whoever, how tall is the Tower C for the Centene Building? Anybody remember? Good, 25. I mean, it looks taller than your building.
It's not as tall as that building. They're still taller than us. Yeah, they're five or six floors above us.
Okay.
I think they're 30, but.
Okay, I was thinking it was less, so yeah.
We probably still will not be the tallest building.
Yeah.
There'll be two or three at least that are above us. But it'll be a very prominent building for sure, so. And then wanted to share with you.
Just to say, I think that that looks great. And I mean, just come back from New York, actually, last week. You know, the, there's a lot of unique buildings in New York, obviously. But when you look at the skyline and when you see the buildings, you don't just look at the sky, the outline of the tops of them, you look at the buildings themselves. And I think yours is going to certainly contribute to all that is Clayton.
Yeah, I think it's going to show really well. I really do. I mean, we love this building. We, I mean, we put a lot of work in this thing. It's, we, our architect team has done a great job and we're very proud of this. So, so there was some concern about the top of the building last time, what it's going to look like. So we wanted to share with you kind of a close-up of what the top of the building looks like. So you can see this is the amenity deck for the condo owners. This is a private amenity deck, just the condo owners will have access to this. But you can see there is a lot of depth to this building. There's a lot going on up there. It's not just, there's some ins and outs and some ups and downs and it's not just all glass, especially on this side. So I think from a distance, it's going to show very, very well. And then I did want to kind of give you a night view, so you can kind of see what it's going to look like at night. Now granted, you're 25 stories up, so when you're down on the, on the ground, you're not going to see that deck, okay? But as you fly over it, you'll see it. And I think from a distance, you'll see the lights up there, so I think it'll show very well, so.
Anna, did they have to be a lighting study or is that not part of?
So they provided some of the cut sheet specs for what they anticipate the light will actually be in that pass, kind of our minimum requirements. But there wasn't a light spillover study done.
Okay, was that because there's not really a residential neighborhood that it will really affect?
Right, so basically.
That's what triggers our spillover study?
Right, so based on the cut sheets that they've provided, the style of light that they provided in there should meet all of our requirements for.
Okay. And you would anticipate like the brightness at the top isn't going to be overpowering? Or it would certainly, like I think our, you know, our code requires things to dull down after a certain time of night. We've just had issues related to the new Centene Building because that is much closer to our neighborhood. So I just, I don't want rainbow lights flashing from the top, that sort of thing, so.
Yeah, that's where we started. No, I'm just kidding. We, it'll be muted, okay? So I mean, it will be, the building will be lit, but it will not be, it will not be overpowering at all, so.
But I like the way, you know, the lighting that I'm looking at here anyway, that we're looking at is kind of, it has some variation to it. It's not, it's just not a light shining out one consistent thing. It adds, you know, that's one of the things I love about a couple of other buildings in Clayton that I mentioned last time, that the light at the top of their buildings has variation and it kind of, it kind of, what's the right word? You know, it showcases the textures on the building and the depth of the structure, so I think this kind of does.
I think, there'll be a variation of light that I think will, I think it's going to, it's, you'll see the top. I mean, I think we want you to see the top, right? I mean, we want, we want it to, you want to know it's there, but we don't want it to overwhelm you. So I think that's what we've tried to accomplish.
And I assume this is LED, everything is LED now, so you can control kind of the intensity and the colors and all of that?
I would think it'll all be adjustable, but I mean, it's, it'll, to honest, I mean, it's been, we've picked fixtures and lighting that meets code, right? So that's what we've done.
All right.
That's all I brought, so I'm open to any questions and if I need to bring Phil up here, I will.
Um, do you guys have other questions? I have one other question, but you know, Becky and Ira cannot see you guys on my screen, so I don't know.
I have one question. When we have it.
Okay, go ahead Becky.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to ask about, we talked a little bit about the light, well, the benefits of the light. And I know I think ARB asked you to add it even for architectural interest and such. And then, but we also talked about the impact that that has on wildlife and birds, particularly migrating birds. And I was wondering if we talked about that you all might look into that a little bit and figure out if your glass is going to be, have a treatment to mitigate any risk to birds or whether you were able to find anything on that.
Well, yes, we did, so we discussed it. So we did research this and I think what we've learned is we don't know yet, all right? And so we don't have all the materials. We're still studying it, we're still trying to figure out what the impact will be, but we've started the research. And once we gather all the materials, then I think we'll be able to have a better tell of what the impact's going to be.
Yeah, I came across something today that was sent to me by someone from the zoo. Because I just happened to be in another meeting with actually Botanical Gardens in the zoo. And they, they've done a lot of work in this area and I can forward what they sent me to you. You probably may already have that. But they also said they're happy to make themselves available to anybody who, like our staff or to you all, if you want to get their input.
Yeah, we would, we would love the help. So we're, it's not from lack of effort, but we don't really have enough information yet to say what's going to happen. So we need, we need, we'll take the help.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think we all would, it would be great if, if the glass you use can be, you know, protective of, to prevent strikes. The Botanical Gardens just put on a whole new glass, you know, building and it's, it's that kind of glass. It has, apparently it's got little dots in it or something that they can see.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So I'll connect you guys.
That'd be awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Alderman.
Any, Ira, any questions or comments?
Just a couple. So are, for the, for your owners, are the, are the windows all floor to ceiling? Is that, is that right to assume?
Yes, they are.
And can you tell us about what your price point looks like it's going to be for the units?
We think it'll fetch 700 square foot.
Price point?
Yes. About 700 a square foot.
So that would be, okay, all right. And you have, you have one, two and three bedroom units? Is that what I remember?
I don't think we have any one bedroom, just two, just two and three bedrooms.
Okay, okay. Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we have some folks on Zoom, they don't have any hands up, correct? Any questions from our listening audience? Okay, very good. I thank you for bringing this information to us. I think it's really, really helpful. And you know, I'm sorry to be last minute Annie last time, but you know.
Wanted to be right.
Want to ask. So, okay, I think that's good.
Thank you very much.
Um, all right, I think we're ready for Alderman Lentz.
I'll introduce Bill 6903 in order to approve a rezoning and a PUD for 7808, 7814 to 7820 Forsyth Boulevard, 4 to 8, 10, 14, 16 and 18 to 22 South Central Avenue for a mixed-use development to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 6903, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain property located at 7808, 7814 to 7820 Forsyth Boulevard, 4 to 8, 10, 14, 16, 18 to 22 South Central Avenue from HDC High Density Commercial District and Northeast Downtown Overlay District to a Planned Unit Development District to be known as the Forsyth Central Mixed-Use Planned Unit District, providing for the change of the zoning map of the city of Clayton, Missouri, approving a planned unit development for the subject property and other actions related thereto.
Alderman Lentz.
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye. Hey, great. So now we'll do the lot consolidation, ready for that?
So as I mentioned, the RFBA for this item covers the rezoning, a planned unit development and subdivision plat for the subject properties listed on the agenda. The required public hearing was opened and closed during the June 14th Board of Aldermen meeting. This evening, you do have an updated underlined because our copier was not printing in color. Bill at your seats, and I will hand that over to City Attorney O'Keefe to explain more. But before I do that, I do want to say that staff recommends the Board of Aldermen approve the subdivision plat with the conditions set forth in the ordinance for adoption.
Thank you Andrea. The staff has prepared a revised ordinance identified for these purposes as Bill number 6904.1 and distributed that to the board members who are present in the chamber. And I do not know if Mr. Patel, Ms. Patel and Mr. Berkowitz have received them, but I believe they've been emailed out. If not, they will be. The, as one may expect with a project of this many pieces of property and complexity, the closing for this transaction among the parties, developer, the sellers, and the sellers is not scheduled within 30 days of adoption of tonight. Our ordinances for the approval of plats as a routine matter require that the plats be recorded with St. Louis County Recorder Deeds within 30 days. That is, and obviously the parties do not wish to record a plat, vacate, dedicate property and vacate a public property until they have this deal done. So what we have done is suggested revised text of the plat approval, which adds a new Section 3 and slightly changes language in Section 4, which says that if the PUD that's approved by the ordinance you just passed, which by the way, I believe will be ordinance number 6762, is not fulfilled in the time limit, which is one year from approval unless extended by the Board of Aldermen, that the plat approval will lapse. I would suggest to you that it should take affirmative action by the city if that circumstances arise. I would suggest repealing this ordinance as opposed to relying on simply the lapse. But the authority to then record the plat with the recorder of deeds would terminate if the PUD expires for failing to meet the one-year deadline. We've also added language saying that as opposed to requiring that it be filed within 30 days, that it must be filed before the issuance of any permits for the project. So that we get both an early date, that you got to do it before the project starts, and an end date, it says if you haven't done it before the project lapses, you can no longer consolidate the lots. So that language is reflected in revised Bill 6904.1. And it is the staff recommendation at the request of at least one of the property owners that the board consider amending Bill 6904 by the text of Bill 6904.1 as distributed prior to second reading of the bill.
Got that, Bridget?
And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The developer is all up to speed on all this?
I assume they are.
Yeah, okay, nodding.
Certainly their property sellers are.
Yeah, okay, got it, all right.
So just to confirm, I need to amend 6904 first?
It is.
Or can I do it all at once?
No, sir, it's the recommendation that prior to introduction for second reading, that Bill 6904 be amended by the text of Bill 6904.1.
You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right, then I will introduce, I will suggest an amendment to Bill 6904 by the revised text of Bill 6904.1.
We need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that stands amended?
And then it's amended, so now I can introduce Bill 6904.1 in order to approve the lot consolidation plat for 7808, 7814, 7820 Forsyth Boulevard, 4 to 8, 10, 14, 16, 18 to 22 South Central Avenue for mixed-use development to be read now for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, no, nothing from the Zoom audience. All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 6904.1, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance providing for the approval of a major subdivision plat to consolidate certain property located on Forsyth Boulevard and South Central Avenue and to relocate a public alley in the city of Clayton, Missouri.
Alderman Lentz.
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye. Okay, done deal. Thank you guys. Thanks for all your hard work. We're really excited, obviously, about the whole project. It's going to be great. And we really are, would love to hear every now and then what you, what you're thinking about on the street, what you're thinking about in terms of the glass for birds and, you know, just keep us posted, if you will. See you guys. Okay, that's it for our business. This is shortest meeting, not, maybe it's not the shortest meeting ever, but it's pretty close. So Andrea, great job being the city manager for tonight. And I guess we can go around, we'll start with Alderman Lentz.
I don't have anything because I missed the Sustainability Committee meeting. So I pass that to Becky.
Okay. Ira, do you have anything to share with us about your activities over the last couple of weeks? And that relate to the city, that's what we.
Oh, I was going to say, I thought about, a lot about you in Scotland. Other than that, I really didn't have much that I could do or report. Yeah, I don't have much to report. I guess I should have asked you sometime in private, but am I on the Public Arts Commission or Committee for some reason? You know?
I think, I think. Plan Commission.
It goes along with the Plan Commission. So you have the liaison to that as well.
Well, I didn't, actually didn't know that. Okay, well, well, okay, thank you. There was a, there was a, there was a Public Arts Commission meeting this afternoon that I didn't go to because I didn't know I was in it. I would report on that if I had gone, but I didn't, so. And I think it was public art, I think it had to do with maybe the Forsyth Point, I'm not sure, but I think that's what it was about. So, anyway, but other than that, I don't have any else, anything to report, so, thanks.
I think I heard a conversation earlier, Anna, the art that was proposed today is on our website under the materials for that project? And the PAC generally approve it?
Yes, so the PAC recommended approval. It was the public art piece that will be located outside of the West Tower lobby of Forsyth Point. And then they also recommended approval of a blown glass sculpture that will be located on top of the Fountain of Chapman Plaza during the months that the water is deactivated.
Oh, all right. Okay, all right, thank you Ira. Bridget, do you have anything for us?
I had, Becky and I had a CRSWC finance meeting, I guess that was last week. And we approved the budget, or at least we recommended the budget, and then it goes to the full commission, I think in August. And, I mean, it was somewhat disappointing in the sense that there'll be a bigger deficit next year than there was protected, projected to be this year. A lot of that's related to we are going to approve a membership fee increase, but that's still not going to cover what a huge increase that we have in commodities and the personnel increases with the increase in salaries, like minimum wage. But I would just again remind everybody that, you know, we're still at above an 80% cost recovery, which is still really, really good for rec facility. It's, it's just, you know, I think 10 years ago, we were at 100, so people's expectation. So people's expectations are really high for the center, which is great. Um, but I think we just have to be mindful that we're still kind of coming out of this. And I think people are doing a good job. The marketing department's doing a great job of trying to think outside the box and really try to um, increase membership, which is still increasing every month. You know, we're at the adult memberships are as high as they were before the pandemic. It's just we're slower to get back families and senior citizens, so. Um, so it was disappointing, but you know, I think there's, I think, I think they have a path moving forward. And you know, it's just kind of the condition of the times right now, so. Um, so yeah, that was, that's what I had to report.
Okay, right, great. Um, Becky, do you have anything to tell us about?
Um, yeah, I just a little bit. I uh, was at the Sustainability Committee meeting last week. Uh, it probably was not officially a meeting because we did not have a quorum. Um, it's been quite some time since that committee has had a quorum and um, something we really need to um, consider in terms of how that's working. Um, we we actually had some like robust discussion on a few different topics. Um, and so I'm looking forward to seeing like how that carries forward into future meetings. And I know um, we believe that the um, Plan Commission ARB is going to be considering a recommendation from the Sustainability Committee to um, adjust the guidelines around solar panels to consider allowing solar panels on like street facing roof, um, roof lines and things like that. Um, and so the uh, some members of the committee may attend that meeting um, to speak in favor of that or see what Plan Commission ARB says about that, so. Um, so looking forward to hearing how that goes. Um, I attended the St. Louis Pride Parade downtown over the weekend. Um, it was a little rainy, but great otherwise. And um, I'm here in Florida, and one of the things that I saw today, which I hadn't seen before, is um, protections that they've put in place for burrowing owls, which are like little owls that nest in the ground in burrows. And kind of like you see um, sea turtle nests roped off on the beach. They rope off these areas, and it could be like in someone's yard or a vacant lot or a right of way. But if there's a burrowing owl there, they protect it, and I just think that's really cool and um, wanted to share it. So it's good to see, I I really enjoy seeing stuff like that going on, so. Thank you.
I'm happy to have another animal lover on the board. Um, I'm, you know, I've got to talk to you about the the peregrine falcons that live in Clayton. I don't know if you know about those, but.
I'll see what I can find out.
Track those, I lie, I can tell you about them. They, um, I haven't gone to see them this spring, but you know, they they've lived here and they keep our pigeon population under control. And they nest at the top of the uh, right now, they're nesting at the top of the building that um, oh, that Capital Grill is in, yeah, thank you.
Cool.
For, yeah, well, I mean, but for a long time, they were at the top of um, the uh, one of the um, the eight thousand Maryland building. Uh, for a long time.
I I used to watch them in that Capital Grill building from my office when I, back when I was, before I retired.
Okay, well, you know, they they may have gone back and forth, actually. So, but um, well, I'm, Rich, you can add you, I can add you to my list of people who love these falcons. So I used to go up and see the chicks, and I haven't, didn't do that this year. Um, all right, so um, thank you, Becky, for that. Um, I I I did want to say, you know, I did um, send out something to everybody about the the studies that have been done on this glass for birds. And so I'm I'm, I'll make that connection with these guys, but I was glad to hear that um, there there are lots of options out there, apparently.
Yeah, there definitely are, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, okay, Alderman Fader?
Uh, the Community Equity Commission is busy, particularly with the Housing Subcommittee. We have two new members, I think, who are both going to be terrific, and we're going to be meeting in July. And the primary issue probably at the moment is how duplexes are zoned in our city, so. That will be a continuing interesting discussion. And finally, Alderman Lins and I, and for a while Alderman Buse, got a tour of three of our buildings, the police headquarters, the Center of Clayton, and the municipal garage. Police headquarters look great, Center of Clayton look great, municipal garage, which I'd never been to, did not look great. And certainly is an area of concern, so. Anyway, it was, it was very interesting, particularly the garage, which I'd never been to before. It's sort of a revelation when you've never been there. Thank you.
Pretty cool. Um, hey, Becky, I wanted to ask something. Um, at the SAC meeting, did we have our new members there?
No, we did not. And so I don't know if they had been invited and informed or unable to make it or what.
And also, I think uh, you guys had mentioned that you're going to maybe reach out to some of the members and kind of take a little survey on what's.
Yeah.
Going up.
Yeah, that still needs to really complete.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I really don't have anything to report since I've been gone for two weeks, so um, you'll be saved any monologue. So, all right, um, that concludes our meeting.
Move to adjourn?
Yep.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks, guys. Have fun in Florida.
Thank you.